Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Dare County Board of Commissioners, June the 17th, 2019 Board of Commissioners meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and at this time, I have the pleasure of introducing the Reverend David Morris, Unitarian Universalist, Tranche OBX for an invocation. Good to see you, as always, Reverend Davis.
It's very good to be here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks to all of you. On behalf of the North Dare Ministerial Association, I bring you greetings and gratitude from them. Will you pray with me? Spirit of life, source of all, God of many names, we give thanks today for the many blessings in each of our lives and in the life of our community. We're grateful for the gift of life, for the beautiful place in which we live, for the traditions of community and hospitality which make this home of ours a blessing to people from so many places. We give thanks for the wisdom in each of our many faiths which guides us to the best within ourselves and in our worlds. We know that we are blessed by all who give so much of their time, effort, and imagination in leadership and in service to this county and its people. We ask that these leaders may themselves be led by the divine call to justice, equity, and compassion in our human family. Spirit of justice, we take time to acknowledge the complex history that is represented in our county. We and our neighbors are descendants of native people possessed of their land and of those who prospered on that land, descendants of people who were enslaved here and of those who enslaved them and of those who set them free. We are people who make our livelihood on the resources of the sea and people charged with overseeing those resources, people who trace their roots back hundreds of years and people who have only just arrived. We are of people of wealth and people of poverty. We are people of all races, all walks of life, ages, abilities, genders, and sexual orientations. We are people of many faiths. In this hour, may representing all the people of the county be held as a sacred trust. As they address their agenda today, our Board of Commissioners considers questions about making sure everyone counts in the coming census, questions of land use, and questions about the present and future well-being of our county and its people. May these leaders of ours be granted the wisdom and foresight they need. May they hear with open minds and hearts what needs to be shared. May they and may we all be guided by a vision of a future in which all the blessings of life, of citizenship in this community are nurtured, protected, and shared by all for all the many generations to come. This we ask in your presence, in the sacred name of that highest truth which each of us holds holy and sacred and which we name in our hearts now. Amen.
Amen. May we stand for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Before we get started, I'd like to just recognize a few folks that are with us this evening. We have two former commissioners in our midst this evening, Ms. Marguerite Umpflett and Mr. Jack Shea. Thank you all both for being here this evening. It's good to see you. Appreciate you all being here. We also have our Board of Education Chair, Ms. Bee Bassnight, and we have our Vice Chair, Murray Helen Balance. Thank you all both for being here this evening. Look forward to hearing from you. I'd like to ask, just if we have a moment of silence, Commissioner Ross's father-in-law is in critical condition and up in Tidewater this evening, and I'd like for you to keep his father-in-law and your thoughts and prayers. I'd also like to mention my mother. She is of the same age as Commissioner Ross's father-in-law. They're 93-years-old, both of them, and my mother has suffered some very serious setbacks, and I'm hoping and praying that she can recover from these. So, I'd like to ask you all for a moment of silence. Thank you. Two folks from the greatest generation.
Yes.
County Manager.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Item one on the agenda is the Chairman's Update.
Thank you, County Manager. I just will be brief this evening, just a couple of functions over the last couple of weeks. I was asked to speak at a luncheon, June the 6th, to the League of Women Voters that was held at Pamlico Jack's, and quite a crowd, quite a crowd there that day. It was very refreshing to see so many folks there. Murray Helen, not so female-oriented any longer. There are some men involved in that group, so they asked me to speak and bring them up to date on county issues, and I spoke about five major topics and brought them up to date with what the Board was doing. The pleasure to be with them and enjoyed being there. Also, along with Commissioner House, Commissioner Tobin, Commissioner Ross, and myself, attended a rather lengthy planning board meeting recently. I don't generally attend those board meetings that often, but there was a topic of discussion with respects to SAGA Construction, wanting to build a new hotel on Hatteras Island, and they brought a resolution, he brought a resolution forward, asking the Board to look at it, and there was some very good conversation on both sides. So, I think they're going to drop back and punt and maybe bring something a little more possibly pleasing to the citizens of Hatteras Island. So, stay tuned. We'll see if that comes to fruition. And then certainly, last but not least, I'd like to come down now and make a presentation. This is a hard presentation to make because who I'm about to recognize is retiring. And he said upstairs, we had a little retirement party for him this afternoon at 3:00, and we, I think we totally surprised him. And I had a little one-on-one in my office with Gary Gross this afternoon, thanking him for his loyalty and service for 20-some years to Dare County, but in particular, the last seven and a half, eight years, as Chairman to our Board. Now, I've been accused of sometimes being long-winded, but Gary got his time in this afternoon. We had a lot of fun. We had some roasting. He roasted all the commissioners up there, had a good time with them. And it was just a special treat to recognize Gary with a little retirement party up there. I do this personally with mixed emotions. I've come to know Gary very, very personal over the last, well, he was on Board as clerk about a year or so before I came on the Board, but I've had the honor of working with him the last six years as Chair. And I can tell you, there's not any more dedicated human being that works for the county than Gary Gross. I tend to, in recent years, not sleep through the night, get up two or three times with a lot of things on my mind, and I'll email Gary, and within 10 seconds, I got a response back from him at 3:00 in the morning. It's not unusual for him to be in this building at 4:00 in the morning or 8:00 in the evening. That's how dedicated and that's how loyal he is. And our Board, every one of the commissioners sitting up there, I have the utmost respect for Gary, and not one time has any of our Board members or myself asked Gary for something that he didn't turn around pretty quick and do it with much enthusiasm. So, Gary, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, I've got two things I'd like to present to you if you'd come up with me. And I'd like your spouse, Janice, to come up here. Here's a, this is a couple that truly does things together. All the things they do, they do together, and they support our Board tremendously. Gary said this this afternoon, many, many times, he would be here late in the evening or early in the morning, and not one time in all these years has Janice ever questioned that, not one time. He reiterated about a situation several years back where they went to dinner one evening at a little after 5:00, and a Board of Commissioner needed something, and his phone went off, and they had already placed their order, and it was something that was pretty critical that needed to be done. He got up, he excused himself, and he paid the bill without ever eating dinner and walked out and came back and got the job done. That's the kind of commitment that we have in Gary and his tenure with Dare County. The Board wants to recognize you, Gary, and give you a certificate of appreciation. The Dare County Board of Commissioners awards this certificate to Gary Lee Gross in grateful recognition of your 20 years of distinguished service to Dare County. The Dare County Board of Commissioners is grateful for your unwavering support, strong work ethic, and steadfast commitment to serving the citizens of Dare County, serving with honesty and integrity throughout his career. You have made extraordinary contributions to Dare County, leaving a lasting impact on our community, and it's signed by myself as Chair. That's from the Board. Now, I got something from the Governor. This is from Governor Cooper. This is the State of North Carolina, Governor Roy Cooper, the Old North State Award. Gary, you're familiar with that?
Yes, sir. Yes, I am.
Because you've helped me frame a couple of them. But this is awarded to Gary for his dedication and service beyond expectation and excellence to the great state of North Carolina. On behalf of the citizens of this state, I bestow upon Gary Lee Gross the Old North State Award. Working together, we can make North Carolina the place of unlimited opportunity, a place where anyone who studies hard, works hard, and lives a life with high values can fulfill and even exceed their potential. And it's signed by the Governor, Roy Cooper, and it's dated today, July, June the 7th. Now, Gary stated up there earlier, he said, he made a comment to the effect that, you know, he looks forward to his retirement, and he said, "In just about a few minutes, I will be on the retirement payroll," but I got news for him, he's got 13 more days. It's the end of June. He's retired the end of June. So, we get 13 more days out of you, Gary.
Absolutely, and many more.
God bless you. And thank you, Janice, for your total support of Gary.
Thank you.
And here's a little token of our appreciation.
Thank you so much.
I beg you.
Thank you.
You want to say anything?
Yes, I would.
Absolutely.
Dorothy, can they hear me if I just turn here?
Yes, we can hear you. Look, here, I've got my.
The problem is the TV recording, it won't hear it if I.
Let me hold those.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, I, it's one thing to be surprised once in a day. He and the Board surprised me once today already. This is now the second surprise, and I am just overwhelmed with gratitude for all the sentiment that has gone into it from this Board, and we had many former commissioners there today. We still have Marguerite Umpflett here, a very special friend, Jack Shea here. He and I have worked together on so many projects, and it's just nice to have them and other commissioners today to be part of this. And I'll tell you real quickly, just one quick story that my father once said. Somebody asked my dad, "What does a clerk to the Board do?" And he had the best answer I've ever heard. He said, "He helps important people get things done." And that is what the clerk to the Board does. But the thing I respect, whether it was one of our previous Boards or this current Board of distinguished public servants that we have here, this is a Board that's all about getting things done for the people. And myself and other department heads and all county employees join in that effort to lift you up in doing that. But on every issue that comes up, it is this Board that's there 24/7 for the citizens of Dare County, for all areas of Dare County, and they are there, and they are the ones who make the sacrifice. It's been my privilege to have a front-row seat to all the many things that this Board does, and that list goes on and on and on. And you have my undying gratitude for that. And as I remind the County Manager and the new Clerk, Cheryl, I'm just a quick phone call away or a quick five-minute bike ride up the road if you ever need me for anything. And I'm dedicating my retirement years and my retirement energy to my wife, Janice.
Absolutely. Congratulations.
Thank you.
County Manager, that concludes the Chairman's Update.
Item two on the agenda, then, is public comment. Ladies and gentlemen, now's the time, it's been set aside for public comment. If you'd like to speak at public comment this evening and you've not signed up, please raise your hand, and you do, I'll recognize you. When I do, please come forward, state your name, tell us where you're from. Please limit your comments to five minutes. There's a green light that will come on. Your time begins, a yellow light that will come on when you have about a minute left, and when the red light comes on, you need to conclude your remarks. On the sign-up sheet, the first person that I have is Bee Bassnight.
Welcome, Bee, Murray.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Chairman Woodard and Commissioners, and congratulations to you, Mr. Gross. Thank you for all your help with the Board of Education. I am Bee Bassnight. I reside in Manio. I am Chairman of the Dare County Board of Education, and with me tonight is Mary Ellen Balance, who is the Vice Chair of the Board. We are here this evening representing the Dare County Board of Education to request the support of the Dare County Commissioners in removing Dare County Board of Education from Session Law 2017-78, known as Senate Bill 253, when it passed in 2017. This was a local bill to require partisan elections for school boards in only nine school districts in North Carolina. Our Board was not consulted and did not request inclusion in Senate Bill 253. In fact, we ask to be removed from that bill through a resolution and many individual communications. In 2017, your Board supported the Board of Education's request to be excluded from the bill, which moved Dare County Board of Education from a nonpartisan Board to a partisan Board, beginning with the election of 2018, and you passed your own unanimously, or you passed your own unanimous resolution. Regrettably, our request in 2017 was not honored. Each of you has a copy of the Board of Education resolution asking to be excluded from Session Law 2017-78. This resolution was passed by our Board on a 6-1 vote on June 11th, 2019. We are asking that you consider passing a similar resolution for the following reasons. The tradition of nonpartisan elections has served Dare County Board of Education very well, as members of the Board with varying political viewpoints have put partisanship aside to focus on what matters most, the education of our children. A compelling reason the majority of our Board is opposed to partisanship is the timing of the elections. A school year in Dare County begins in late August and ends in early June. In nonpartisan elections, election of school Board members occurs in the primary, which would be in March during the presidential election years, and the new members take office in July, which allows newly-elected members time for an orientation to be prepared to make critical planning and financial decisions for our students, teachers, and staffs before the school year begins. In a partisan election, the newly-elected Board members are elected in November and take office in December, right in the middle of a school year. That timing places newly-elected members at a disadvantage in many ways. Our staff and veteran Board members are actively engaged in school business and taking care of students, and have little time to orient new Board members in the budget process and school operations. As you know, our Board tours schools throughout the year, and one-half of those tours take place before December. Thus, the new Board members miss the opportunity to engage in the classrooms and to see presentations by our students and teachers. In even years, it is possible that the majority of the Board could be brand-new, four seats on the Board are up for election. This would not be a problem if July was the start date, but in the middle of a school year, this could be difficult. In education, we put students first always, just as you do. The decisions made by the Board of Education should always be about the best education for all students, not about political ideology. The Dare County Board of Education does put students first, and we hope you will support us in our quest to be excluded from Session Law 2017-78 and return our Board to a nonpartisan Board. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Bee. I think you've provided a copy of that resolution to all Board members, and I'd like to just say that we.
Should we sit down or stand up?
Oh, no, you can sit down. In fairness to the Board, I'd like for them to have a little bit of time to review this, and I would recommend we take a look at it and bring it back to the next meeting.
Yeah, as you said. Just in echoing your sentiment, what I've come to look for on resolutions, and this is in no way discounts your presentation of the resolution, I would like to hear someone say, "This is why we should maintain the current status quo and why it's working really well." What I've found is there's a habit of, "Here's a resolution, guys, pass it." And it sounds very good. I mean, there's very little I can argue with about our kids and our education system. But it's just recently gone from nonpartisan to partisan, and I guess in terms of weighing both sides, because as we've talked in the past, Mr. Chairman, we have occasionally gotten ourselves trapped on an issue that appeared on the surface correct, and we in good faith supported and found later, boy, we'd have liked to have heard the other side. So, again, it is not to at all diminish or, you know, discount your resolution or presentation. I simply would like to hear why this.
Yeah, and by putting it on another agenda, actually putting it on the agenda, we can open that up to the public to have an opportunity for both sides to speak.
I agree.
So, it's a pleasure to the Board, to work for the Board. So, we'll do that, Chairman Bassnight, and so, thank you.
Other public comment, oh, I'm sorry, on the list, next on the list is Gail Dolan.
Good evening, Commissioner.
Good evening, Ms. Dolan.
My name is Gail Dolan. I reside in Florida. However, I've come today because I feel it's so important. I flew in last night. I do have a home here in Frisco, and I also have the lot in question next to The Ditch in Buxton. And I believe you probably have read my letter from the last meeting and also probably saw a copy of my survey at that time. So, you could see that The Ditch in question kind of goes in and out of my property. I know years past, I believe the gentleman's name was Jim Potit, he had delineated where the wetlands were, and I know that Bob Burris and probably Ed Williams can give you the history of The Ditch much better than I can, because although I've had property on the Outer Banks for 30 years, I don't know the history from way back. What I do know is, what I see today is timbers in a ditch that is absolutely disgusting. And not only that, but I will also tell you that DOT has compounded the problem by putting sand there. I believe both probably encroach on my property. I have some pictures that I would like you to take a look at that I took today.
Please share them with us.
So that you can see the severity of what I believe is horrible. Years ago, many years ago, as a matter of fact, I was planning on putting a restaurant on that particular property. However, we did not do that. But at the time, I can tell you that I had been told, and I believe I have a letter, I am transitioning from Tennessee to Florida, so I believe I have a letter in my possession that does state that That Ditch could never be filled. Now, I see that this has become a question when Mr. Junette has placed all that timber in there, and I don't believe he got a permit to do that, and there is an ordinance against it, and I was advised of that a long time ago. So, how do you tell one person, "You can't do that," and tell another person, "Oh, it's okay"? I'm begging you, please don't make this something that happens all too often down the beach, where people do whatever they want in the wintertime, and then things come about and you're told, "There's nothing we can do about it now." And I think that's exactly what's happened here. I'm hoping that you can see, you know, the problem that exists. That's probably all I have to say, and I hope that you take a look at those pictures and decide that that is absolutely horrible. I don't, you know, I don't know what effect this is going to have downstream or what it's going to do to my property as far as the values are concerned. I don't believe he has enough property there to do much with, and he knew that at the time that he quitclaim deed that property. I thank you for your attention. I thank you for looking at the pictures. I hope that you understand what it's like for somebody like me to realize what's going on and come down and see that logs there. Thank you all, I appreciate it.
Well, thank you for taking the time to share those photos with us and taking the time to come to us, our Board, and share your thoughts. We very much appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Manny Madures.
Manny, always good to see you.
Well, thank you, sir. Good evening, Commissioners. Name's Manny Madures, and I'm from Kitty.
Name's Manny Madures, and I'm from Kitty Hawk. And I always want to thank you for the opportunity to make comments for the betterment of Dare County. Now, in past years, my comments have mostly addressed energy and environmental folly. Tonight, however, my comments concern education of children, another area of continuing degradation, with United States students ranking 27th in math and 20th in science out of the 34 most developed nations in the world. Specifically, recently, the Coastland Times informed us, and I quote, "A proposed five-year strategy is on the table for Dare County schools," end of quote. However, not a clue is given as to what such a strategy will do to improve education in Dare County. In fact, the advertised new program appears to be written more to confound than to enlighten, making a reader wonder, "Is there any educational substance to such a five-year plan"? In addition, nowhere is the cost of such a program stated, nor are we told why it's going to take five years to complete this plan. Furthermore, the newspaper presentation appears more inspirational than substantive, with trendy buzzwords and obtuse jargon, and again, I quote, "Student sympathy interviews, healthy lifetime choices, collective greatness," what's that? Another apparent tripe, again, causing a reader to wonder if anything meaningful is intended in a way of real education. For example, nowhere among the plans expressed assortment of platitudes and generalities can redefine mention, or even a suggestion of the need for students to develop critical thinking, or powers of reasoning, or good judgment, and problem-solving, attributes that are sorely needed throughout our country, and probably in Dare County as well. After more than 60 years of professional work and using the vernacular of the day, I believe I've seen this rodeo before. For example, in the form of decades of global warming mythology, climate change nonsense resulting in windmill blight and solar sprawl, wherein government-captured so-called scientists have become little more than recipients of welfare programs for PhDs and associated environmental predators. With my full respect for each of you Commissioners, and recognizing the heavy responsibilities that you carry, I strongly recommend that at least one of you find time to learn in detail what this five-year plan is all about, and specifically, how much of this year's 700,000 additional funds to the school budget is devoted to what simply may be another concoction of too much government. Government that continues to drag down education to the point now, on average, only 30% of education taxes reach our counties, our countries' classrooms, while the rest goes mostly to an educational elite of special interests and highly-paid bureaucrats. Commission oversight needs to be done by someone. And long ago, folks, I learned that it does not take an advanced academic degree to practice common sense and good judgment. In other words, surely this commission believes that school funding should not be skewed in the direction of fanciful aspirations, of which this latest five-year plan appears to be emblematic. And with that, I thank you for listening.
Thank you very much, Manny. Appreciate your comments.
That's all I have on the side of it. Would anyone else like to speak in public comment? Do we have any public comment from Buxton?
...the last week. He said there was no pipe there since the bridge was tore down when Highway 12 was built. No, he's wrong. When the bridge was torn down, there was a pipe in there for the drain. This drain is an emergency drain for air means. It drains the front sedge of Peter's Ditch. It's very essential, and this is capable for these towns. Property I live on right now, flooded in here, tenement, back in about a foot and a half gone into the ice of the wind. If it was what happened today, it would be into... Also, a deed, a nonwarranted deed that Mr. Junette has, if you look at the, I got a copy of his survey here, it shows that this drainage ditch is on his property. I got a map for a survey for Mason Quinby back in 1979, does not show that drain on that sedge property whatsoever. It shows the bridge, the sedge on the backside of the canal is not connected to this property that he owns. On his, on his, on his parcel, it shows it on it. That was done during his survey. And what right does anybody have to come in and close off something? No permits. It's just, the young lady said, "Well, we go." I asked the county or the state about this. The opposite side of the road also, and this property, this drain was not even dug off the parcel that he owns. It was dug off the property by the highway, and it's owned now by Jonathan Emanuel Williams and Mrs. Dolan Arum. So, what right does he have to make a right of way to a piece of property that he's got a nonwarranted deed to? When this property is poured, and speaking to other county, the Army Corps Engineer, I had him to come and look at it, they told me it could not be filled in. They were both sending him a letter stating that he had to remove it. Later on, they find out they said they had it jurisdiction. I talked to another state gentleman, which I just found out passed away last year while we were talking, all of a sudden, I couldn't get up with it anymore. And I found out just recently that he had passed away, and his name was Clay Willis. He said, "Any canal or drainage ditch over 50-year-old, and so did the Army Corps Engineer, said, cannot be filled in." And this drainage ditch is well over 50-year-olds. So, that's why I have to send you that. So, thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Appreciate that. Very much appreciate it.
Also, well, I had talked to Bobby after about this. He asked me to take it to Donna Creve. I took it to her, and she made copies of everything I got it laying here.
Great, thanks. Great, thank you so much.
Other public comment?
Bob Beres.
Welcome, Mr. Beres.
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm lucky enough to live on Hatter Island for probably over 40 years. I don't want to get in the way of anybody's property down on Hatter Island. I've been a fisherman for 20 years and then a realtor for another 20 years, so property rights are important to both of those professions. Thank you for allowing the people of the Peter's Ditch to speak, okay? I own two properties along the ditch. 49212, Highway 12, is my number-one property. During Emily, or Matthew, probably 90% of my property floods, and it floods to an alarming rate. It has never entered my house, but basically every year we have changes, and I am worried about those unattended consequences that are ahead for all of us as we fill all of these ditches in. I thank you for allowing me to speak, and basically, my opinion is that we shouldn't fill that ditch in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comment from Buxton?
No other comments from Buxton.
With that, Mr. Chairman, we close the public comment and move to item three. Item three on the agenda is the 2020 Census Complete Count Committee, and Donna Creve and Dorothy Custer are here for that presentation.
Good evening, ladies.
We're going to tag-team you guys this evening.
I see that, I see that.
Dorothy, you want me to start?
You go ahead.
So, in May, Dorothy and I attended a census count organizational meeting that was sponsored by the Albemarle Commission. We had received an email from Mr. Atton asking us to attend that, so we did. And there were staff there from the Census Office that did presentations on this complete count committees. Every county in North Carolina is being asked to establish a complete count committee. The goal of the committee is to increase participation and ensure that everybody participates in the 2020 census. And so, we attended that meeting. You have some of the information that we received there was included in your packet. If it is the pleasure of the board that we establish this committee, we have included a suggestion of several organizations that would be beneficial to have on that committee. There also needs to be a chairperson selected, and if it's the person of the board, Dorothy and I can share that role, and I'll let Dorothy add whatever she wants to add in there. And if you have any questions, we'll be glad to answer them to the best of our ability. It's just, they've challenged all the counties to have at least 80% participation in the census, and that's, that's what the goal was.
I have not participated in the complete count committees in the past. I know the planning department has been involved with it, and so, when the county manager sent the email, I was sort of like, "Okay, well, this meeting, we can go and learn about it." I do think Donna and I could do a good job. I think communications is a big part of it. We've done some research since getting back, and it looks like there's going to be a really good communications plan at the federal and the state level. And with the resources that we have with videography, I think we can do a good outreach.
Yes.
And we talked on our way back about who could be involved, how to access those hard-to-reach populations. That's what we spent the drive home talking about, and we included some of the agencies that we thought could partner with us to reach some of those, some of those folks. So, I think, you know, it's a gradual process, and by the end of the year, the communications would start saying, "Hey, it's coming," so that people kind of gear up, and then when it actually happens, there's an awareness.
Right.
And we, we really want our count to be as accurate as possible, because there's a lot of federal dollars. I'm sure you all know that, at stake, and we want to, that share that, that we deserve to, to come to the county. So, that's, that would be our goal, is to count every person.
Have y'all, have y'all engaged Mr. Cofield?
Yes, sir. I spoke with Mr. Cofield just, just last week, after your Legal Women Voters presentation. I reached out to him, because he is on the state board, and he's aware of our plan. He's kind of operating at a different level. He's still actually, because so many, I don't, I think he has like 20 counties there.
He's got quite a few counties.
I'm not sure how many he's representing, but he's still in the process of going to the county boards, because they all meet. And he sent some information. We've started a shared folder, Donna and I have. So, he sent some bumper sticker templates and some information that we have as a shared folder, so that as we move forward, we will definitely communicate with him.
Well, anything we can do to, this is critical with respects to potential federal funding.
Absolutely.
And if I recall, those numbers weren't as, as nice as we'd like to see them from the last survey, and that, that affects us tremendously throughout the county. Are you with this committee? Are you also looking to do something on our website to encourage?
Absolutely, and we're proposing that we have the towns involved.
Great.
You know, so that they're working with us. And I think if we can put together a plan so that we, I think we have the schools, I don't have the list in front of me, but we have a number of organizations that we think we can kind of provide the tools that they need to share. And hopefully, if folks see it from us, and they see it from them, and then maybe they see it again through the media, we'll be successful in raising those numbers.
Yeah. Anyone else? Danny? I'm sorry, Jim.
Yeah, I have a question. Just a suggestion on who else you might include on that list to try to reach out to the Hispanic community, Mano Al, Almano?
Yes.
We have a representative from Health and Human Services, and she serves on that board.
On that, okay.
So, we were kind of covering it that way, but we can reach out to them as well. I can't remember her name, but we...
That organization has a lot of trust in that community.
Absolutely.
And that's one of the problems that I've heard with the Hispanic community, is getting someone to ask them questions that they trust to give answers to. Anyway, just a thought.
How about church, churches?
Yes, the Ministerial Association.
Is that on there? Yes, so...
And Dare County Center and the Baum Center, that would be under County Health and Human Services, yes?
That would be under the older adult services.
Older adult services.
And we, we may, with your permission, that might be good, that you give us a little direction so that we can add some people to this if we find some, some people that are interested and can help. Because this was just our initial brainstorming, but...
The initiative, some folks from, and I can't remember their names, and I apologize, came up from Atlanta, from the federal census folks, and met with me a couple of months ago, and talked about this. And they talked to us about the importance of it, and you all know that, but they said that Dare County was, I want to say the statistics was maybe 20 to 30% under-reported. That makes a huge difference in tax dollars. When, when we get things that are population-based, we always get less than we think we should, because so much of our population is tourism-related and aren't permanent residents, and they don't get counted in, in that. And so, every person that we can get that's here is important to making sure that, you know, we get the dollars that allow us to provide the services and those kind of things. They said you need to do a complete count committee. They recruited us to do that. Like any good manager, I delegated that to a lot of good people. And I can't thank Dorothy and Donna enough for being willing. They didn't, they didn't look at me and say, "Oh, my God, what have you put on my plate?" Now, they enthusiastically accepted it and have moved forward with it. I say all that...
I can tell they have.
That's, that's, that's your story anyway.
And he's sticking to it.
But in talking with the folks from Atlanta, there's nothing that's not on the table if you have a good idea. They talked about communities where they went in and talked to McDonald's, and McDonald's put it on their cups, and they talked to, I don't know, all kinds of things like that in a community, and pretty much anything that you could think of that would communicate the idea to get involved, get counted in the census, and the importance of that to the community is something. And so, with this list that you have, as they said, that's a start, but you don't have to think of them today. But if you think of something going forward, have an idea, hear something, then, then let them know, and, you know, that's a place we can, we can go and try to do this. And again, there is some significant benefit for us if we do it well.
Danny, you had something?
Yeah. Encourage you to reach out to Cape Hatters United Methodist Men. They have, there's seven different churches on that board. And I believe her name is Diane Tyrrell, with Almano Arumano, like Tyrrell County.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And if you need intro, just keep me posted, and there's a lot of people that come into the food pantry, they're flying under the radar down there.
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? Then, do y'all, then you're asking for us to prepare a letter, and for my signature to identify organizations soliciting participation in the complete count committee? Is that what you're asking us to do?
We'll prepare a letter for your signature that we send out to the towns and to these other organizations. other organizations saying that you've asked them to participate in our complete count committee.
Is that, we need a motion to do so?
Mr. Chairman, in that motion?
Yes, sir.
Could you also authorize the chairman to send a similar letter to groups that are on that list so as we get ideas, we don't have to wait two weeks and come ask you again?
Yeah, good point. Absolutely.
I agree with that.
So, I believe we had a motion to approve that by Commissioner House and Vice Chairman Overman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tobin. Further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Go get us some federal money, ladies.
We're working on it. We're enthusiastic about it.
Bobby, just in passing, if we are undercounted 20%, does that mean that we might, instead of 35, the number 35,000 that I've heard referenced frequently, we could be as high as in the low 40s in an actual count?
That's what they were representing to me. I have no way to know that.
Yeah, I just wondered if there was any.
And I don't know if that was a Dare County-specific number or an eastern North Carolina number or a.
National.
Or a national number, but that was the statistic.
That's what I was curious about. Okay, thank you.
So, we have heard the challenge where to raise those numbers, we're going to work on it.
Great. Fantastic.
The eyes of the county are upon you, bro.
That brings us to item four on the agenda. This is a 2019 federal build grant application for the Hatteras Pathways and I'll let Donna make that presentation as well.
Yes, sir. Last year, the board adopted a resolution and authorized me to submit a build grant, which is a federal Department of Transportation grant for improvements, for the construction of improvements. And we submitted an application on behalf of Hatteras Village to try to secure funds for the construction of their multi-use path down there. We were not successful, but we're going to try again. We would like to try again anyway. The Hatteras Village has hired a gentleman who has a past history of writing grants, so he's helping me with it this year and hopefully, we will submit the grant and possibly be successful. The build grant provides money for projects based on rural and urban areas and Dare County is considered a rural area. And if we are successful on this, we stand to get like a million dollars, which would build the pathways down there and that would be a wonderful thing. And so, in order to help facilitate a better grant application, I'm asking that we adopt a resolution again. And I know that Commissioner Ross just said we don't want to adopt resolutions. This is worded very similar to the resolution that the board adopted last year. It has been changed to reflect that the passenger ferry down from Hatteras to Ocracoke is now underway. Last year, it was still in its study stage, but now that it's been implemented, we've changed that wording. And if the board would be so kind as to adopt this resolution so I can proceed with the grant application, I will do so and hopefully, get some money for Hatteras Village.
Great. Thank you, Donna. County manager, would you care to read the resolution?
Sure.
This is a resolution supporting the Hatteras Village multimodal build grant request. Whereas, the North Carolina Department of Transportation has implemented a passenger ferry system originating in Hatteras Village, traveling to Ocracoke Village, thereby enhancing the ferry experience for the thousands of people that visit the Outer Banks annually by providing an alternative to the vehicle ferries that also travel this route. And whereas, infrastructure improvements in Hatteras Village to supplement the passenger ferry services are needed so visitors and residents can connect to the Hatteras Ferry Terminal using multimodal pathways throughout Hatteras Village, not roadways. And whereas, the availability of reliable and convenient modes of transportation such as bicycles for passenger ferry riders, once they reach their destination of Hatteras Village, will ensure the success of Hatteras-Ocracoke Passenger Ferry. Whereas, the use of multi-use pathways in Hatteras Village will provide a safe system of multimodal transportation in Hatteras Village for those persons utilizing the passenger ferries while vacationing on the Outer Banks. And whereas, the federal funding in the build grant program is available for the construction of transportation infrastructure improvements, especially in rural areas such as Hatteras Island. And whereas, the passenger ferry system linking Hatteras Village to Ocracoke Village and use of the multi-use pathways for pedestrian and bicycle riders represents a unique multimodal transportation project, which is the objective of the build program. Now therefore be it resolved, the Dare County Board of Commissioners respectfully submits a build grant application for the construction of multi-use pathways in Hatteras Village in support of the Hatteras-Ocracoke Passenger Ferry.
Pleasure to board.
Move to approve.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner House and it's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion?
Yep.
Commissioner Couch?
That build grant, if this is successful, that's going to be providing some inertia for some real critical mass here. This is almost going to ensure that we can complement that money and get this done. This is critical.
We hope, first, you don't succeed, try, try again, right?
That's correct.
So, any further comments?
With respect to Donna's earlier observation, sometimes exceptions are made. This is one of them.
Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Who's likes that? Motion carries unanimously.
Stay right there, Donna. Item five on the agenda is Timothy Jeanette's request to fill the ditch and, Mr. Chairman, at the appropriate time, the applicant would like to address the board as well.
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
As Mr. Outen said, this is the request that we've heard a couple of times now from Mr. Jeanette to fill a ditch on his property there in Buxton. Last month, we had a public hearing on it and at that time, we had received an email from Mr. Jeff Ryder of NCDOT indicating that they had received additional information, that they had not had an opportunity to evaluate and they requested that we table action on that and so, we have done so. And there is an email that I included in your packet from NCDOT that says that they could not find this much discussed culvert that is shown on surveys and that we've heard empirical knowledge this evening about. They indicate that whatever has occurred down there has not impacted NCDOT's right away and that they have no objection to whatever Mr. Jeanette is requesting since it does not impact the NCDOT right away. That being the case, the question of whether the filling of the ditch will have an issue on the adjoining property owners and on public health, which is the qualifier in the ordinance that gives the county the permission to entertain. The request to fill the ditch is Chapter 51 of the Dare County Code of Ordnances and it includes language in there that says that before any ditch or pond or stream can be filled, that there has to be authority from Dare County based on a finding that there is no possible harm to public health. Possible harm to public health is the language that's in there. And so, Mr. Jeanette is here. I believe he has a wetland consultant or someone with him this evening that's going to speak on his behalf, which is something that the board had indicated that we would like to hear from. And so, I'm going to step aside and let Mr. Jeanette speak and then if you have any questions for me, I'm here. Again, the request is to fill the ditch. And so, after Mr. Jeanette speaks, that will be the specific action, whether the county authorizes that or the county does not authorize that. And so, Mr. Chairman, I'll step aside and ask Mr. Jeanette to step up.
Yes, ma'am. Welcome this evening, Mr. Jeanette.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, I want to thank you for this on this matter. First, let me say, this trench I'm proposing to fill in, if it wasn't natural and it had water in it, I would have never even undertook this thing. It was dug by the WPA in the 1930s, it's completely dry and it has full-grown trees growing out of the middle of it. Since it has been dug, it has not been maintained by the federal, state, or Dare County governments. The mysterious culvert that is supposedly to be there is not. NCDOT dug a 10-foot hole along the entire length of my property on the front and then probed down another four feet and could not find the culvert. Also, Mr. Williams stated in the last meeting that I filled this area, but I did not put any sand on any of the state right away. When I first came before this board in April, I told you the Corps of Engineers said I could fill it back to the wetlands without a permit. Since that time, I had them come back out and remarket and provide a letter saying that I can fill back 220 feet before I need a permit. Ms. Creef has a copy of this letter and I have some if you all would care for it. I have contacted Doug Dorman of Atlantic Environmental Consultants to help me obtain the permit for the Corps of Engineers to cross the wetlands to the highland in the back. In the last meeting, Mr. Williams and Mr. Barris both stated their wetlands were flooded. All the drainage in this area flows downhill and to the west and goes out Peter's Ditch, which crosses Highway 12, 1.7 miles west of this location. Since Mr. Williams is on the east of my location and Mr. Barris is on the west of my location, there must be a problem downstream from Mr. Barris, not on my property. In closing, this trench is not a drain for the swamp. It has no culvert to go under Highway 12. It is too elevated and would take a lot of technology, which equals a lot of money and water, to make water run uphill. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Doug Dorman, I'm just here with Mr. Jeanette. Just, I've been on site several times, have done the wetland delineation and met with the Corps and they do not have jurisdiction on the existing ditch that we're talking about.
Mr. Dorman, tell them who you are and what you do so they'll understand.
Doug Dorman, Atlantic Environmental Consultants. Do wetland delineations, cam and permitting and so forth. As Mr. Jeanette said, the road itself is anywhere from 10 to 15 above elevation as you get back to the wetland line and Peter's Ditch are down to 2, 3-foot elevation. So, all that water is running back to, you know, Peter's Ditch. And I think probably the issue is more with Peter's Ditch, you know, culvert's being clogged and different areas being filled in. So, I think maybe that's probably more of an issue than him filling in the existing ditch. If anybody has any questions for me?
I don't know if you're the right person, but one of the speakers from Buxton was holding up deeds or diagrams of property.
Yes, sir.
Quite frankly, I'm trying to sort out what are the facts because I've heard there's a culvert, there is no culvert. It's your land, it's not your land. Water flows uphill, it doesn't flow uphill. My property floods, it won't flood. I'm actually really confused, Donna, about what are the actual facts of the issue rather than my point of view, I'm making stuff up, or my point of view, I'm making stuff up.
I'll field that question then. I will tell you that I have seen surveys that show a culvert. The paperwork that Mr. Williams was holding up, I have it in my folders and it was included in the first packet that we had. So, at some point in time, there was a culvert there that a surveyor found because he demarked it on a survey. Surveyors have to, by law, show what's on, the improvements that's on the ground. Whether NCDOT dug down deep enough to find that culvert, they're telling, at least some staff from DOT is telling us, no. Now, Mr. Williams is saying that he's talked to former DOT employees and they say that they recall a culvert being there. Ms. Dolan, Mr. Barris, Mr. Williams have all said that in their lifetime, maybe not Ms. Dolan since she hasn't owned the property that long, but that in the lifetime, in the ownership of the property, that they recall this culvert being there and that in their minds, it serves to drain their property.
But there's no physical evidence of such culvert.
That's what DOT is telling us. You're correct that they have dug down and they have not found it.
Yeah, DOT has no.
So, take away the culvert though. So, DOT's saying they're not finding the culvert, the culvert's out of the equation. Then it becomes, do we let Mr. Jeanette fill this ditch that's on his property that drains, that connects back to this Peter's Ditch? And if the IT people could put up that map that I included in your packet, you'll see it. You'll see the length of Peter's Ditch and this canal, this ditch that's on Mr. Jeanette's property runs back to Peter's Ditch. So, take away the issue of the culvert.
Okay.
There's a ditch there.
But I also heard it's not Mr. Jeanette's property. One of the speakers, I thought I heard say, this is not all on his property.
There is a ditch on Mr. Jeanette's property.
So, it is on your property?
Yes, sir. That he wants to fill.
It's shared, isn't it?
It runs along a property line. So, does that affect the drainage of the area? You have people saying, yes, it does. And then you have Mr. Jeanette saying, no, it doesn't.
Can you walk us through this diagram? It's up.
Yes, sir, I can. If they could turn that around for me or even not turn it around, you'll see the property in red. That's Mr. Jeanette's property. You'll see the narrow part that connects to NC 12. That's the area where the ditch is that he wants to fill.
Is the ocean to our right or left as I'm looking at? I'm trying to orient what I'm looking at.
Okay. The ocean is going to be on the other side of Peter's Ditch. It's going to be on the south side of Peter's Ditch.
You presume I know where Peter's Ditch is?
Peter's Ditch is what's marked there back behind Mr. Jeanette's property that says, that's the blue ditch there, Peter's Ditch. Peter's Ditch is one of the main drainage improvements down on Hatter's side.
I thought those were just white. I see now I can read it.
No, and so, Peter's Ditch runs for a long way. It runs down and meanders back and crosses NC 12 at some point and drains to the sound. So, the question becomes, if you fill a portion of the connector to Peter's Ditch, does it impact the drainage?
One more time, I apologize, Donna.
That's okay.
The sound is on the Peter's Ditch side of the diagram.
Okay, you're looking at that picture right there, Commissioner Ross?
Yeah, with the odd-shaped red outline and then Peter's Ditch vertically.
That's good, Donna.
Yes. So, from where you're looking at it, this is the sound, this is the ocean.
You were wrong. Okay, so, sound is on my left as I look at the diagram.
It's on my left, yes. Yes. Yes.
It's on the opposite side of it.
You can hit it with a baseball.
Yes, thank you, yes. It's not north and south and east and west down there, it's different than it is up here. So, that's why I'm not saying north and south and east and west. So, it's on the other side of NC 12 is where the sound is.
Where that scale is on there somewhere.
Yes. So.
Wait, wait, the scale is where the sound is?
No. No, 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 no. The sail is the ocean side.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
I rest my case. I'm not the only one.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to follow it, obviously not challenging anyone.
Right. So, Peter's Ditch runs a long ways west and then it crosses back to the sound.
And this culvert that is, again, I know you said take it off the table.
The mysterious culvert, yes.
But it supposedly runs from the outlined red property across Highway 12 toward the sound, but it can't be found.
At some point, it did.
Which implies you're sloping from higher ground to our left to lower ground.
NCDOT right there is elevated and it drops off on both sides, yes, sir.
Both sides, okay, okay.
So, you know, you have to sift through this. Who do you believe? And I will tell you that regardless of who's speaking to us, I think that even though the county has that authority in Chapter 51, that as much as we hear about stormwater this and stormwater that, I think that we need to proceed very cautiously and because if we start granting every request to fill ditches, you know, what's going to be those unintended consequences that Mr. Barris spoke about?
I have another question.
Go ahead, Jim.
Mr. Williams, in his talking down, in his comments down in Buxton, said that any, and this is just for clarification, any drain that had been there over 50 years cannot be filled according to the Corps? Is there any truth to that?
I don't know about that. Mr. Dorman may be able to answer that because that's his field of expertise.
No, the Corps, even if that was the case 50 years ago, rules and laws have changed since then and the Corps has been on there twice and they don't have jurisdiction on that. At some point, it transitioned into wetlands and they do have jurisdiction on that, but they don't have jurisdiction on 225 feet of that ditch.
Okay.
And it's important to point out that that ditch does not go directly to Peter's Ditch. It goes for about 220 feet, transitions into wetlands.
Wetlands.
And then there's a significant area of uplands on the backside of the property.
The survey shows the highlands and shows everything.
And then there's Peter's Ditch. So, the drainage has to go through a series of properties and wetlands just to get to Peter's Ditch, so.
And my other question is, did you put that wood in the ditch?
Yes, sir, I did.
Okay.
And I did not do that covertly in the middle of the winter. And I did not do that covertly in the middle of the winter. This is right on Highway 12. Anybody get a road by and seen me, I mean, that's, I, I weren't doing it secretly or nothing.
But, but I have to ask the question, what was the reason for it?
Sir?
What was the reason for it?
Um, the, the biggest reason was I couldn't even pull off the road into on my property. So I, and the guy took a tree down, he had some mulch and some, and some logs, and we threw them in there.
Was it legal?
Was it legal?
No, no, it was not, I guess. I didn't, because beyond, the, the first thing I talked to was the Corps, and they said they didn't have a problem with it. He said, exact words, the Corps says, you have a hole in the top of a sandy ridge. And I said, yes, sir, I know I do. He said, and that's why, he said, we have no problem, we have no jurisdiction, we have no problem with it. Fill it if you want. And I did not.
Sure they didn't have a problem if they didn't have any jurisdiction.
They don't have jurisdiction.
Yes.
You know, that makes sense.
They could tell you anything, it didn't matter.
Donna, this might be a stretch, and I, and I don't know the proper terminology we're having this done in, in Breakwater.
This is something, right?
What's a proper, is it hyd-?
Hydrology.
Hydrology, thank you. I couldn't, word just wouldn't come in. Has any of that ever been done on these properties down there, to your knowledge?
To my knowledge, no.
Any kind of testing?
To my knowledge, no, sir. I, I don't, I can't speak if Mr. Jeanette.
Would it be, because I will be honest with you. I don't have enough information to be comfortable to make a decision on this one way or the other, to be quite honest with you. There's too many conflicting stories and too many conflicting pieces. And may, maybe that's a request that we have of the applicant, is, is to, if you want this to happen, give us, give us those kind of tests to let's really see what the effects are going to be.
Of, of someone that has the credentials and the education and the experience as a hydrologist or a soil scientist.
Absolutely.
You could get any of the engineering firms that do site plan work, that do drainage work, elevation work, to do that. Because if you were going to build a site for us on there, they'd have to do some kind of stormwater plan to get the water flows and where they're going and headed and all that stuff. And so I'm sure there's somebody, a PE or somebody out there that could do that.
Well, you know, I'd, I'd be more comfortable seeing what kind of results they, they, they present. Because I, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not prepared to support or deny, because I don't have enough information, to be honest with you. Vice Chairman has a question.
Mr. Dorman, you, you said something a little bit ago that I want to kind of follow up on. You, you said that when you were talking about the, the, the wetlands back there, about when it rains or floods or whatever, that it, it drains onto some other properties. It, it's likely to drain onto other properties. So that's, you, you said something very similar to that.
Right, those wetlands go along Peter's Ditch and backside to several properties.
Okay, so, so basically saying that, when, when you have runoff from the road down along this area that he wants to fill in, it fills that wetlands up and it does flood other properties. That's basically what you're saying, right?
Right, just like any property on Hatter Island.
Is it, is it flooding some of the properties of the people who've been talking here against filling the ditch?
I don't think the ditch has anything to do with the flooding itself. I think it has more to do with Peter's Ditch backing up during storm events. I think that's more of a significant impact than the existing ditch that's in place now. I don't think that has anything to do with, with the wetlands.
That seems to me the contentious.
The people who've been speaking evidently have some sort of empirical knowledge of flooding on their property.
Well, I.
That they, that they attest is, is from the ditch. Now, I'm just repeating what they said. They certainly feel that way, and they've been there a long time, some of them. So I'm, I'm trying to kind of sort, sort that out through this.
I understand what you're saying. I don't think you can really say that that filling in that ditch or leaving it as it is would affect the flooding of adjacent properties. I mean, for me, I think a lot of people in the area, I've seen significant flooding on my property. I live in Kitty Hawk over the past few years. I think storms have increased, I don't know why, but I think things have changed in that respect. And I think that has more to do with it than necessarily the ditch that's going, that might be filled now.
So who's ditch is Peter's Ditch?
Mr. Peters.
Uh, it's.
No, it goes back to the 1700s.
Peter's Ditch is Public Trust Waters connected directly to the sound, so.
So no one is responsible for cleaning out whatever, stopping it up that you're talking about as causing flooding of the other properties?
I guess on private properties where people have crossings across Peter's Ditch, different roads, those culverts could be cleaned out.
So there are culverts in Peter's Ditch?
There is, there's many culverts across Peter's Ditch, yes.
It runs wally from the Fessenden Center all the way down to a place called Indian Town. It's traditionally been there.
And it drains that direction?
Uh, it drains to the, to the east.
Does it drain from the Fessenden Center down?
West, right.
Uh, it dri- it drank, that particular section, as Mr. Jeanette said, does drain to the west, but there are parts of it to the east that drain to the east. I had to clean up a fuel spill.
So it drains in both directions?
Yes, it does.
Depending on where it starts.
Right, yes.
Well, he make, did Vice Chairman Mr. Val point, who, who's responsible for Peter's Ditch?
Nobody. The, the, the ditches, I don't know how it got there, it's been there for the history as long as I've been in Dare County, we've heard about Peter's Ditch. There was an effort made, gosh, 15 or 20 years ago.
2002.
To do a snag and drag project on it, but you had to go to every single proprietor to get an easement, because the ditch isn't owned by, it just crosses people's property. The.
Well, who built it, George Washington or something?
I don't know if it's, if it's an old remnant ditch, if it was done by the WPC. I'll just tell you, on Hatteras Island, back in the day, and I'll have to get Danny to tell me what back in the day means, but back in the day, if you needed a ditch, you dug a ditch. And there weren't any houses, there weren't anything, and nobody cared because there was nothing there. And so they dug ditches, and they drained their property and everything was fine. And with the advent of the development and all that we've had there, these old remnant ditches are still there, they still serve those functions, but they weren't put there by county government. Or if county government did do them, they didn't do them like building roads and taking responsibilities, went out there and did it. So.
I have another question.
Go ahead, Vice Chair.
Just pose this, this question.
Sure.
If this ditch is filled in, and some of these people's properties flood after a, after a rain, hard rain, and they get an engineer to come out and they determine that the flooding is a result of this ditch being filled in, what type of remedy do they have?
I can't answer that, can you? It'd be hard to determine that.
There's no remedy.
Yeah.
You're, you're, you're stuck with what you got.
Right.
I'm back there wondering, why are we even so, why are we trying to, why are you, sir, trying to fill this ditch that's already filled with logs and things?
It's, and, and to be clear, it's no more field than me to the American flag. I mean, that's all I put in, you know, not even that much, because it's.
Well, you're trying to fill it to have access to your property.
Yes, sir, I, I have high land in the back.
Yeah.
And I, I need access. And that's what it's all, all this is about, is access. That's all I'm after.
You have a piece of property and it cannot be reached?
Yes, sir.
Let me ask something, could you put a culvert across there and drive across that? That way the ditch would still have, well, the ditch goes.
It drains back to the swamp. All these folks say it drains to the sound. It does not drain to the sound. It would have to run uphill. This, this ditch has never been maintained since the last shovel full from the WPA threw it out. It's never been maintained since. Every time it rains, Miss Dolan's sand runs down in the ditch. Mr. Williams' sand runs down in the ditch. It's been slowly filling up for the last 80 years. So in another 50 years, it'll be so full, because nobody has maintained. There is no water in it. There is not a drop of water in it where I put the logs, and I did put a load of sand, I admit it.
And when it, when it rains, well, I'm, sorry, just a second. But when it rains, it runs down this long, narrow stretch back toward the wetlands back there, back towards Peter's Ditch.
It would have to be a biblical rain to make it run back there.
I don't care if it's biblical or somebody gets that.
Because it's, it's, it's like this, the ditch is like this. I mean, it's not, it's not straight, there's trees, there's full-size trees growing in it.
Well, let me, let me ask you this. What is the width, see where that red outline is? Look, look, look to the left, that butts, that butts Highway 12. What is the width of that?
It's, it's 14 at the road, and then as it slowly goes back, it widens.
It widens to what? Doesn't look like much. 20 something, maybe 20?
Probably 25, 30 feet.
Gotcha. I mean, Commissioner Bateman made a good point.
Just put it, just culvert, and then fill on top of it and drive across it, but leave it. The problem I got, no one has told me that it's not going to adversely affect this lady's property.
Right.
It's not going to adversely affect the people that spoke against it. And it's not only those people, this gentleman beside me's got a ton of calls, I got a call and I'm up here. So people are not really happy about this ditch being filled.
Oh, I know.
So, so give us a reason, or show us that it's not going to adversely affect adjacent property owners. DOT says it's fine that you fill it, but it also says in that same analogy, in the fact they cannot talk to the testimony to whether it would adversely affect adjacent property owners, not. That's what my concern is. If you have an Emily comes in, all of a sudden that water packs up, as Mr. Dorman would tell you, being a fellow Kitty Hawker, all of a sudden, hybrid's ditch fills up, then the swells fill up, the next thing you know, you got three-foot water in your backyard. Because of all the field that's been done around you, if you didn't have the big property development back there, your property probably wouldn't fill, wouldn't flood, like mine wouldn't either.
Let me ask, let me ask the county manager, uh, county, put your attorney hat on there. Do we have any, can we put any, any restrictions on, on, say we, we approve him, we approve this, that he can put a culvert in and fill it? Can we put a restriction on it, as the vice chair says, that if in fact, down the road, it, it adversely affects his adjacent property owners, then he will remove the, remove the culvert?
We could do some type of an agreement that would, he would agree to do that, that we could enforce. Our, our problem's going to be the enforceability of it 15 years from now or something. When we have a problem, he's not here, he sold the property, he's died, whatever's going on, how do we go about getting whoever's supposed to do it to do it? And two, if they don't do it, how do we go about doing it ourselves?
What about writing it to him and his heirs?
Well, I mean, we could do it in terms of a restrictive covenant or a deed or something like that. They could, I mean, I suppose there's a way to do that. But I think you're going to have some costs and some enforceability issues on the back end. It wouldn't be a simple matter of saying, hey, we got a problem, come, he's going to say it didn't cause it, he's going to bring in his engineer and say that it didn't cause the problem, we're going to have to get engineer says it did, and here we go.
Gotcha.
But, but it could be done. If you wanted to do that, we could do that.
Commissioner Tobe.
I'm going to be the devil's advocate on the culvert, too, because culverts are just pipes. And in order for a pipe to drain, there has to be an inlet and an outlet. So in order for there to be an inlet, you would have to have a catch basin installed. I mean, it, it's not just a matter of throwing a pipe in the ground, it would be, have to be an engineered project that you put in there. You'd have to have water volumes and flows. Like you said, you can't make water flow uphill. I think, in my opinion, one of the things that would really give us a, a better overall view of what's going on is to have a contour done by an engineer, go out and get, hire, get him to hire a survey group, go out and shoot a bunch of ground elevations and find out, do the adjacent properties drain into that ditch? That's a simple thing to do, you just go out there and shoot a bunch of elevations. Does the ditch drain across Highway 12, or does, want to drain across Highway 12, or does it want to drain into Peter's Ditch? Once again, simple, simple thing, just go get a bunch of elevation shot. Then once that happens, then we can move forward and try to figure out, do we want to put an engineered drainage system in there?
Mr. Dorman, would you speak to that?
I think, I mean, it would tell you where the drainage is on either side of the property, but I don't think that changes the fact that that flow from that ditch is directly out to the wetlands. I mean, you could have high ground all around it, which it is high ground all around.
Well, I'm including in my thought process, not doing just your property, but doing the adjacent properties to find out what the elevation, what the grade. If the adjacent properties are graded, so they go into that ditch and you fill the ditch, then they have an issue.
Okay, I understand what you're saying.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Couch.
One of the, I'm sympathetic to what I'm hearing on both sides, but what concerns me is what message this is going to send down the road that, hey, you filled that ditch in, I'm filling my ditch in. Here we are talking about stormwater runoff and the fact that these are low barrier islands. And whether or not your philosophy tells you whether climate, sea level rising or is not rising, what kind of message are we sending to people down the road? We did it now, ought to be able to do it in mine. That, that bothers me.
Well, I, I hear that, but we're taking our time here, trying to establish what the facts are, Danny. So if someone comes and says, I'm going to fill in my ditch, and the facts show that it's a main drainage channel, we're going to say no. See, I'm still with, with the chairman, I don't know what the facts are.
Yeah, I don't know what the facts are.
I think, Jim, I think you made a good point. Because again, I'm, I'm still astounded that you have a piece of property you cannot access. And secondly, that the ditch is partially filled in. And thirdly, that you claim it can't flow uphill towards North Carolina 12. So it has to be flowing towards Peter's Ditch. Have I got that right, Donna?
Sir.
Yep.
Well, I, I tell you.
Some accomplishment.
We, we can talk all night on this, but I, I would, I would be inclined, in fairness to the applicant, to table this until we could get.
Yeah.
Further detail on both sides to be able to make a reasonable decision with respects to this request.
Yeah, I would strongly urge, like Commissioner Tobe said, a topographical map of that area, define exactly where, does it, because you say the ditch goes uphill, and that's fine, I understand that, but it's got, also got to go downhill somewhere, too. If it goes uphill and downhill, uphill and downhill. So we, I mean, we're at, we're at a point, or at least I'm at a point, to where, does that ditch actually drain water? Does it actually hold water? Is it a swell? Is it a ditch? Exactly what is it? And doing a to- a topographical map would tell us, at least give us more information than what we've got in front of us.
Don't you want more than the map? Don't you want the PE to come and give you an opinion?
Yeah, I want the PE.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And I want to add one thing, I want somebody to tell me, it's not going to adversely affect.
Right.
The adjacent property owners.
That's what this will do.
And hopefully that's what that's going to, that's what that's going to do.
Yeah.
Commissioner. I can't make a judgment on it, I don't know.
Well, I, I, I think we need to, I think we need to move on this. We need to move either yea or nay, or we need to table it. And, and my, my recommendation is to table it until, in fairness to the applicant, come back with some, some, some surveys and some facts.
What would be a reasonable amount of time to table it for?
Well, till he returns.
Yeah, till he comes back.
We're getting caught up in the semantics of the rules. If you just don't take action, it would be incumbent on the applicant, if he ever wants
If you just don't take action, it would be incumbent on the applicant, if he ever wants you to decide, to bring you the information you need. If he never comes back, then you don't have to do anything.
Okay, and that's fine as well.
Right.
So if we don't need a table, then, um...
Don't, you're not taking any action.
Right, we're not taking any action.
So you haven't approved it or disapproved it?
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. We're going to take a ten minute break. I'll call the Dare County Board of Commissioners back to order. County manager.
Chairman, that brings us back to item, uh, six on the agenda. And this is the architect selection and the contract for the design build, for the, for the design of the Health and Human Services building. And Dave Clausen will make that presentation.
Hey, Dave.
Good evening. Um, if you remember on March sixth, the board at the retreat approved moving forward with the help, construction at Health and Human Services. You'd received a programming study. And you chose option two, which had a total estimated cost of, or an all-inclusive cost of four million eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. After that meeting, uh, we, or the county issued an RFQ for architectural services. We got four responses. Capital Improvements Planning Committee met on June the third after having reviewed those responses and voted to recommend to the board for approval, Oakley Collier Architects. They're out of Raleigh. They're the architects that did the Dare Center. Bobby, myself and Tim Oakley went ahead and got pretty quickly a contract together so we could get it on this agenda instead of waiting another thirty days. Um, it's a standard AIA contract, which we've used before, and we had maybe two minor changes. The, the fee that's included with the contract is four hundred and forty thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars, which equals ten percent of the estimated construction cost. That compares pretty reasonably with what we've seen in other projects. And I've listed, um, five, the last five I had. Uh, about eight percent for the Dare Center. Um, around ten, just under ten percent for this building. Uh, ten and a half percent for the Hatteras, uh, office building. Uh, seven percent for the Regional Emergency Communications Center, but that had a lot of technology cost in the, in the construction cost. Um, and then almost twelve percent for the animal shelter, which is a specialty design. So we think the ten percent's pretty reasonable. I've included an amendment to a capital project ordinance, which establishes a budget for the architectural fee and very preliminary estimates of twenty thousand for construction testing and twenty-five thousand for owner and other cost. Uh, with, with the source to be our next issue of debt. The next issue of limited obligation bonds, as you know, will be for, uh, the two property purchases we've done, plus COA, plus the animal shelter. So what we're asking you to do is first select Oakley Collier Architects as the architect for the Health and Human Services project. Approve the contract, authorize the county manager to execute the contract and adopt the capital project.
Thank you, David. Any questions, David, on this, um, item six? Pleasure of the board.
Move to select Oakley Collier Architects P A as architects for the DHHS building project. Approve the contract and authorize the county manager to execute the contract and adopt the amendment to the capital project ordinance.
So motion on the floor by the vice chairman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, David.
Chairman, that brings us to item seven. And this is the architect recommendations from the Capital Improvements Planning Committee. Today, we met, uh, with the architects that, uh, we had selected to interview for the, uh, COA campus project that we have going. We were in an enviable, enviable position today because we had two firms that were very highly qualified, were very impressive. And pretty much made us feel good that we couldn't make a bad decision, we didn't think, from what we had there. And the two firms, one of them was called J K F Architecture. They're a small firm out of Greenville, I think. And, uh, they've done a number of community college programs, or architectural projects throughout the state. And the other one was Boomerang Design, and they're a much larger firm. Uh, and I think they said they had done projects in thirty-two of the community college counties, or thirty-three of the counties, and done a lot of work. Uh, they've done work in Dare County. They did many of our schools. They've done Currituck schools. They did, uh, the COA project in Currituck under the same statutory exemption process that we're going to use to do this. They've done a lot of, uh, uh, construction management at risk projects. And the J K F ones have not. So when it was all said and done, we were splitting hairs. But the fact that, that Boomerang had done many projects in this area, uh, they were using one of the engineering firms that we've used often here, and that we've been real satisfied with. The fact that they've done a lot of construction management at risk projects, which is how we do those things. Uh, and that they're familiar with our community. They, they knew the players, they knew the labor issues, they knew a lot about our area. I think swayed the committee to recommend that you all select Boomerang Design, um, to be the architects for that. And so, um, Commissioners Overman and Commissioners Ross were, uh, at the committee meeting. And I'll, if there's anything you want to add to that, this is the appropriate time for your fellow board members.
I really don't have much to add. You've summarized it very well. We did have indeed two, I thought, very qualified firms. I don't see downside on either one. I just sort of leaned toward the construction management at risk experience and the time working Dare County Schools by Boomerang and felt comfortable with them as architects for this project on COA campus.
I agree wholeheartedly.
So is, um, is there, are you prepared to make a motion to select Boomerang Design?
I am, yeah.
As, as the architect for the College of Avon Wall Project and authorize the county manager to negotiate a contract for board approval? Is that a motion on your, from you, Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
And seconded by vice chair?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, item eight is the aptim agreement for the Shallow Bag Bay project. As you all are aware, uh, we have appropriated funds that, uh, legislature appropriated to do a dredge project, uh, in Shallow Bag Bay. Uh, aptim, we had approved a contract, I don't know, several many months ago, for them to do the preliminary work. They've completed that. This is the project contract proper for them to go ahead and do the design, all the work that they've done, uh, to get this project going. Uh, again, it's paid for out of the state funds. Um, we're supposed to be getting those here shortly, and so I don't think we have a problem there. Um, and if, there are no county funds involved. Again, this is a project that we took on on behalf of Manio and folks over there. And, uh, aptim's ready to go, assuming that you all approve this contract tonight.
Okay. Pleasure of the board.
Approve the agreement.
There's a motion on the floor by, um, Vice Chairman Overman
I'll second it.
to approve the agreement with APTIM for the Shallow Bag Bay project and authorize the manager to sign the service agreement. And it's, uh, been seconded by Commissioner Tobin. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
You authorized me to sign it right in that motion?
Yeah, I put that, I said that in the motion.
That brings us to item nine on the agenda, which is your consent agenda. On the consent agenda, you have the approval of amendments from June third. You have the public works budget amendment for the sale of surplus equipment. You have the public health divisions veterans care agreement, and you have the tax collectors report.
Move to further.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner House to approve the consent agenda as presented. It's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further comments? Hearing none, those in favor of the consent agenda and the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
And then last, Mr. Chairman, you have item ten, which are the board appointments. There's a position open on the organelic task force. And the organelic task force has asked that Russ King be appointed to the task force to replace Jed Dixon, who has resigned.
Pleasure of the board.
Make motion to approve motion to Russ King to be appointed to the organelic task force.
Motion by Commissioner Tobin, is there a second? Second by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you. That'd be your agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, county manager. That brings us to, uh, managers' business and commissioners' business. Do you have any o- other items?
I do. Um, we're, in our dredge project, we have all the dredge documents. They've been signed by everybody. Uh, the chairman, I think, will sign them today. Sometime today, you'll sign those tonight. Uh, and that project will, all that negotiation will be completed, and we can start moving forward. We have received, uh, the money, uh, in our account for the dredge. We have it in our account. Um, we're, we've got to put it in a separate account.
All right.
But what we need you all to do is authorize me to execute such budget amendments and other documents as necessary to budget those funds into the budget. And then just do the things I need to spend that money on that project, and then whatever else Dave adds to what I just said.
For two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty.
So moved.
Second.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner Tobin, seconded by Commissioner House. Any comments?
This is a historical moment. I do, I do have, I do have a comment. I, I would like to say, in fact, it was going to be in my commissioners' comments, but on June fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen, the governor signed into law the money to construct the dredge. Ironically, exactly one year later, June fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen, our private partner, E J E Recycle, signed the agreements concluding all of the legal paperwork and contractual obligations for this project. So it's a, a real good day.
Yep. County manager, I hear you say we received the funds?
We received the funds.
Kir-ching.
The first third of them.
First third.
Five million of the fifteen.
Five million.
So, any further comments? Great work, good stuff. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carried unanimous.
Chairman, there's a, a bill pending, it's a local bill, that the town of Manio got, it's H four twenty-nine. And it's the authority to regulate harbors. And they got it specifically for them to regulate vessels and vessel moorings and those kind of things in, uh, Shallow Bag Bay and their harbors in the town of Mania. Hyde County has also been asked to be included, have been included in that legislation. Uh, and they did it, um, for, uh, their harbor there, and I can't remember what they call it, Silver Lake in, in Ocracoke, um, as well. In looking at that, we were thinking of Rodanthie Harbor and the problem we have there with that something catamaran that's been there eight or ten years. We're having a difficult, trying to figure out how to get it out of there. Uh, and we, I don't know that we have problems, but we could have similar problems in Avon Harbor as well as in Stumpy Point Harbor. And so my question for you all is, is this something that we should go to our legislative delegation and ask them to include Dare County in that, if it's not too late to do that?
Yes.
It, well, let me, let me bring you up to some, uh, up to date on that issue with Representative Heineck. He has, he has prepared another bill to do just that on the coast of Carolina. And having conversations with him about adding this to this current bill, he didn't want to jeopardize that bill to hold it up. So he asked that we, um, uh, kind of hold back on that because he has another bill that he wants to present that includes the entire coast of the Carolinas. So.
Any harbor on the entire coast?
Pardon?
Any harbor on the entire coast?
Yes, yes, yes.
Bobby, does that include, uh, abandoned vessels?
Um,
You know?
The answer is it doesn't say it specifically, but it gives them the authority to regulate. And it talks about moorings and speed limits and no wait, and lots of powers to do that. I interpret it to say, yeah, if you left your vessel, then you violated their mooring ordinance. And you would have the ability to come in under that ordinance and have it removed. So, yeah, I think it would give you some more power than you have now because, as I've told you before, they've got those vessels under removal of a, an abandoned motor vehicle statute. They've just defined that vessel as a motor vehicle, and you have to follow that statute, which means you're supposed to tow it, you're supposed to move it to a storage facility, you're supposed to try to sell it. All kinds of stuff you got to do, as if it was a car. And the minute someone touches that boat, that boat, and many of the other ones, it's going to fall apart. There's no towing it out, putting it somewhere. Um, and so it really doesn't fit the problem that we have very well under that statute.
The, the, the representative's reasoning behind the separate bill is that they didn't want to keep going back and forth
Yeah.
on, on individual inlets.
Makes sense, yeah.
Um, I agree. Just another thing to give you an update. Every year, at the beginning of hurricane season, we have the ferry division run the Rodanthie Harbor to be sure that the emergency ferries can get in and out and, and all those kinds of things. In case we lose the road at Rodanthie or somewhere else where we might need to run those emergency ferries. That harbor needs some work, and it, there are some problems there. We're getting into a catch twenty-two now. The harbor is a federal channel. The Corps is supposed to keep that channel open. The Corps doesn't have any dredges that they can get down here. They don't have any money to pay for the dredging with. Uh, I've been to, uh, Ferry Division and said, hey, guys, y'all are running the emergency ferry. What are you going to do if you, you can't get it in and out? And they said, it's a core channel, they got to do it. I said, well, they're not going to do it, they don't have any money. They don't have a dredge they can get in here. Aren't you going to keep it open? And they said, no, we don't have any budget for that. We don't have any, it's not up, we don't, not up to us to do that, it's a federal channel. And I'm like, well, so we're going to leave the channel full of sand, and we're going to lose the road, and we're going to have no means of egress, or we're going to waste two or three weeks while we get some kind of an emergency declaration and get somebody in there to do it. So we're at a catch twenty-two because nobody's stepping up to the plate. We're going to spend our money, and we're going to get the spoil site ready to go so that whoever does it eventually has a place to put the sand. Um, and, and we're waiting right now on, uh, some topography so we can get a cost estimate and know how, how to build the walls and all that stuff. But we'll take care of our part. Uh, but not sure where this is going. I just want to alert you that that is an issue. Um, and, you know, I haven't elevated it beyond the staff level, but at least at the staff level, I'm not getting any movement for anybody to do anything there to, to bid it, to get somebody else to get different permit, whatever. Uh, that hasn't happened yet. Uh, and everybody seems to say, it's not our problem and we don't have any money. So, it's not our problem.
But what type of dredge?
I'm sorry.
What type of dredge normally works that?
A pipeline or one of the small Something like the snail. Snail kind of dredges that they can put on a barge. Still have to pump into our spoil sites. We have to pump and haul it. Our site's not big enough to haul the sand. So they'll pump it in, and in the past, we've hauled it out, once they pumped it in. Uh, and the Corps has done it in the past. But they're not here, uh, and they don't have a dredge they can get here. And they don't have any money to bid it for somebody else to do it, and so they've just said, we can't do it.
The state Ferry Division with, with a pipeline dredge that is suitable to do the work, won't do it because they don't have the, they don't have their budget.
It's not their, it's not their channel, therefore they haven't budgeted any money to, to maintain that channel, and therefore they're not going to do it.
This is a channel that has been looked at, and is currently still being looked at to widen because it's not really wide enough. And putting a state channel next to it, which actually just widens the federal channel, but none of that's been accomplished yet. So they're really
Talked about it three or four years ago.
I mean, the attorney basin needs work too.
Exactly.
Yeah, but we just, we, we're concerned because with the approach of hurricane season, you know, we can't, we lose the road at Rodanthie, and we don't have an emergency ferry, we got a problem.
Is there an issue if, if, if the state had the money to put on it as an emergency situation? Would you have to get approval from the Corps for the state dredge to come in there and pump it out?
I think the permits already exist. I think, and I'm, I'm speaking out of school a little bit because I don't really know, but I, it seems like the state could dredge under the Corps permit. Uh, I'm not positive about that, but...
But when you've got North Carolinians at risk, it would seem reasonable that the legislature under an emergency situation, I'm sure they've got emergency funds.
Well, probably we don't have an emergency yet. Trying to avoid an emergency.
It, well, you know what I'm saying, potentially. That there ought to be some funds available in DOT or somebody on an, on an emergency type basis. It's an emergency because we can't get a dredge in there, and we got one sitting over here, and I guess it's still sitting over here, and man's horrible.
Well, then, with your permission, maybe the chairman and I can contact appropriate people further up the chain and see what we can make happen.
So moved.
Pardon?
Betty Jo Shepard.
I'm thinking that, well, maybe both at the state level as well.
Yeah, just for the knowledge of the board, I heard a rumor this past week that Josh Boland, who was the chief of staff for Congressman Jones, has moved along and is now working with Senator Burr's office. And he is the dredge man. He, he knows more about this area than anybody. So I think that if, I, I have to talk with Betty Jo later on this week. So I think that if, I, I have to talk with Betty Jo later on this week, I can reach out to her, too, and maybe see if we can put a little top-down pressure.
It makes sense if we never got an issue.
And we'll reach out to DOT at higher levels as well.
Yeah.
It's a federal channel.
Yeah.
The channel is, is closed.
Anything else, County Manager?
Um, the last thing I'm just, is just, we had talked, and we talked, and we talked, and we waited, and we waited, and we waited about demoing the old administrative site. At the end of the month, we will have, by the end of this month, we will have moved all the tenants off of that site and have them relocated so that we have an empty site, and we at that point would be prepared to begin our demo work there. Before we do that, the, we need to have a CIP meeting because we gotta get it into CIP and get the money in the right place so we can do it, but we're on track to finally move forward with that project, and so.
The worst case, when, when's the first mole swung?
I'm sorry?
I said, worst case, when's the first mole?
Uh, depends on how quickly we can get all you all together for the CIP meeting. I would guess we would need to July come back and get the CIP approved at the July meeting, is that a reasonable date?
You have the request, I gave them to you, and they're in Rob's mailbox today.
So it, well, in a perfect world, what would happen is we'd, sometime between now and, our meeting is July the what, July the fifteenth, we would have a CIP meeting, so the CIP could go through the CIP, the plan, which would include this. Assuming that the CIP was okay, they would recommend it to the board, and we would bring the board.
Second meeting in July?
Was only one in July.
That's right, we only have one.
On the fifteenth. If, if that's too ambitious because of scheduling in the summer and all that, then it would be the first meeting in, in August. And then once you've approved it, it would be however quickly we can get East Coast Demolition to come out. We've already did it, we're ready, we've already got the permits, we're ready, we've just gotta get on their schedule, and I don't know how long that would take.
When we approve it into CIP, they need to go ahead and start gassing up the pool of them.
That's exactly right.
So I give you that because Dave's gonna send out, you got the CIP today, he'll send you out an email that says, okay, guys, give us some dates for when we can meet.
Sound like a plan.
And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Public information officer, Ms. Hester, do you have anything for us?
No, sir, I don't.
Okay. Finance director, Mr. Clausen, you have anything else?
No, sir.
Thank you. That brings us to Commissioner's business, and Commissioner Couch, would you kick that off this evening?
Uh, yes, thank you. A little distressed to hear about the passing of Dr. Janet Riddick, Kitty Hawk. She was on our Health and Human Services Board for about fifteen years, and I got to know her pretty well in the eighties. Just really neat person. She had a great sense of irony and a sense of humor that went with it. Gonna miss her. Another young man, he's only fifty-eight, the Stowe family down on Hatters, they're very popular. This is a immensely talented musical family, and David Stowe passed. There's at least three David Stows that I'm aware of, but this is David Brian Stowe, David B. Stowe, had seven brothers and two sisters. All those guys are just fantastic. A couple of them have played in professional bands. They're gonna be having his memorial tomorrow, commemoration of life, so be some really excellent music at the Hatters Village Civic Association. Unfortunately, I got, well, fortunately, I have to get the braces off my kid, so there's been thousands of dollars, my youngest, I shouldn't say my kid, my twelve-year-old gets his braces off tomorrow, so that's the priority there. But it's just a wonderful family. His father, I remember years ago when the Graveyard Land Museum was doing oral histories, David's father, Charles Stowe, talked about being offshore with his father, March nineteen forty-two, when a German U-boat surfaced close to them and, and complete courtesy offered to buy what coffee and cigarettes they had onboard, and just a great, great storytelling family. So we'll miss David. Cape Hatters Secondary School of Coastal Studies graduated forty-two graduates. The commencement speaker only spoke three minutes, it was a hallelujah moment, we were over and done with, and sixty minutes, sixty-two minutes, and everybody was out. Want to thank the planning board, I want to thank the planning, the planning board and our planning department for ensuring that the process worked on the hotel down in Hatters. I was glad to see, kind of setting back and watching this unfold, that there was consensus, that there is a project needed down there, but that if the only sticking point we have is height, then that would indicate to me that any sharp and capable engineering firm can still find a way to make money by working within a reasonable request or the existing laws. The Big Rock, Dare County had a really good representation, about a hundred and eighty-five boats. I'm just proud that over twenty of these vessels, these sport fishers, were able to get out of Hatters and make it offshore to the fishing grounds as, in some cases sooner than those who are coming out of Carteret County. Couple of, they had a B.C. Buddy Kennedy boat, had a Bayless built boat, fell up, capped him out of Frisco, did real well on a tuna, just a beautiful sushi-grade tuna that was brought in. So just a smashingly successful tournament, and Dare County continues to make its stake in these sport fishing tournaments and just the clientele that goes with them. These guys are critical to our economy, and that's why our inlets are imperative, they need to remain a priority with us, Oregon inlet, of course, and Hatters inlet as well. And that's plenty, that's all I got.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Tobin?
Well, I'm gonna start off with a sad note, too. I'd like to have everybody say some prayers. There was a terrible wreck in Currituck this morning. It was four employees from Walmart that worked on the night shift, and they had a head-on collision in Currituck with a vehicle traveling the opposite direction, and three of the people, the employees perished in the wreck.
Oh, my goodness.
And one of them is, I believe, at Norfolk General in critical condition. The other two people, and nobody was wearing a seatbelt in that car. The other vehicle involved, they had seatbelts on, and I believe they're in the Outer Banks Hospital. But anyway, let's say some prayers, everybody, for the families and the survivors, and let's remind everybody that seatbelts are actually a pretty good thing.
Was it, fell asleep?
I, I don't know, I'm not sure. With that said, this morning, the Community Advisory Council for the Alamooral Commission and the elderly, well, the elderly, Peak Resources and Spring Arbor, we had an elderly abuse talk. This is the conclusion of Elderly Abuse Month. We gave, I gave a talk at Spring Arbor, was very well attended, and actually, a ninety-five year old gentleman that had been in World War II came up and spoke to me for about a half an hour afterwards, which was absolutely fabulous, speaking to somebody who was in the Army in the Pacific Theater. It was, and just sharp as a tack, it was really nice. Along with Bobby saying the contracts have been signed, we also, the task force met, and we reviewed and passed the contract for the private partner to enter into their contract with Jensen Maritime for the Naval Architect in Seattle. So that has moved forward, and they've signed the paperwork on that. Along that nautical line, so to speak, I also had, I'm the chairman of the Monitor Marine Sanctuary Advisory Council, we had a meeting this past week, and they, it was the time for electing a new chairman, and I'm proud to announce that we elected Bobby.
No.
I knew I'd get a rise out of him. Absenteeism. No, I was, I was appointed again, so I'll have another two-year term. But the neatest thing that happened at that meeting is, I don't know if you all ever go to the Diamond Shoal data buoy, but it's been missing for quite some time now. It got washed away in one of our storms. The fascinating thing about that, it is still transmitting data, and it's a thousand miles off of Africa.
What?
That is cool. That was exactly our reaction, like, what? Of course, the data has no relevance to us here in Dare County.
No, really?
But NOAA has also financed the replacement. They've, NOAA's also financed the replacement of that buoy, so we should be able to get that installed sometime this summer, probably in the August timeframe when they're out there doing it. But that's pretty neat, isn't it?
That is neat.
Um, and also, finally, Gary, thank you for everything, buddy. You, you were so welcoming when I came onboard and a true friend, and I will miss you dearly.
Thank you.
That's all I got.
Commissioner Ross?
First off, thank you at the beginning of the meeting for the moment. Appreciate that. Secondly, tomorrow I'll be speaking and addressing the Rotary Club at their monthly meeting and updating them on activities in the county, the Commissioner's business, and hopefully improving our relationship and communications with the Rotary Club.
Which club?
Which club? How many Rotary Clubs are there?
There's a bunch of them.
There you go. I don't know. I'm at the Ramada at noon, speaking to the quote Rotary Club.
North Banks.
Yeah, North Banks.
North Banks.
As opposed to what would be the others?
Oh, there's Kitty Hawk Rotary, there's.
Manio is the original one.
There's First Flight.
First Flight.
There you go. I was invited by the member from the Nagshead Golf Links who participates in this particular Rotary Club as they were seeking a guest speaker.
North Banks.
Got it, North Banks. I will also be addressing the Veterans Advisory Council on Thursday, which I look forward to as these guys are the best of the best. Want to remind everybody, early voting begins on June nineteenth for the runoff election for the third congressional district between Greg Murphy and Joan Perry, both Republicans emerged from the primary earlier. We have the responses to our new animal shelter requests for quotes due in on Friday, and I anxiously await to hear how those are received. And finally, on Thursday, the Alamooral Commission will be meeting. Our guest speaker addressing us will be Senator Bob Steinberg, and at this meeting, we will also confirm and approve the new fiscal year budget for approximately seven million dollars, most of that, of course, being area agency on aging, congregate meals, Meals on Wheels, and the Northeast Workforce Development Board, which assists job seekers, students, and those looking to improve and find adequate employment. So that's all I have, sir, thank you.
Great, good job. Thank you, Commissioner Ross. Commissioner House?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One thing that I really need to bring up, which we thought was pretty much done with and over with, but unfortunately it's come, come back up in the, in the House, and it is House Bill four eighty-three, which was a short title, Let Them Spawn. The bill is intended as an act to require a minimum size limit on all commercially and recreationally important species of marine fish to ensure seventy-five percent of juvenile fish of each species have an opportunity to reach maturity and spawn at least once. Sounds like a good bill on the, on the, on the top side of it, but once you dig down into the science of it, you find a different story. House Bill four eighty-three will significantly, significantly reduce the recreational harvest of species included in the bill. The main fish that they're talking about is the spot, which would be a forty-five to a ninety-eight percent reduction. A croaker, which would be an eighty-two percent reduction. A sea mullet would be a forty-eight percent reduction. A striped mullet would eliminate using small mullet for bait, so you know, you can no longer fish mullet for, for bait. The southern flounder, which we know that they've just introduced a amendment to, calling for a sixty-two percent reduction this year and a seventy-two percent reduction next year, but the Let Them Spawn bill would actually reduce the southern flounder to a ninety-seven percent reduction. Bluefish would be at eighty-seven percent reduction. Reduction in the harvest would result in dramatic increases in dead discards, especially in the recreational sector, sector. This has already been seen in other fisheries. On average, forty percent of red drum killed in North Carolina are thrown back by recreational fishermen, some as high as seventy percent. Increased size limit for the southern flounder resulted in almost twenty percent of flounder killed in North Carolina by being thrown back by recreational fishermen. House Bill four eighty-three will not ensure that seventy-five percent of all juvenile fish reach maturity and spawn at least once, as the bill implies. House Bill four eighty-three would force recreational and commercial fishermen to harvest primarily female fish in most species where females grow larger than males. So then you'd have a problem with some of the species is you'd have too many females or too many males, depending on the species. The proposed size limits on the southern flounder harvest would be a hundred percent female to seventy-five percent of which would be sexually mature. The peak fishing season for southern flounders during the summer and early fall, which means most fish will reach the minimum size limit to be harvested prior to their first spawn, which occurs in the winter. First-time spawning, spawners are not as productive as fish have, as productive as fish that have spawned multiple times. Fish do successfully spawn once, will have little or no opportunity to reach their full spawning potential to spawn again, as they will only be fished enough or harvested between spawns. The use of commercial gear, which strictly regulated and completely prohibits to avoid death discards, becoming a problem with commercial fisheries. The selectivity of commercial gear allows managers to regulate net sizes to target bigger fish and reduce interactions with smaller ones. This will severely limit commercial fishermen's ability to harvest any species not affected by the new speed, size limit. Blanket approaches, such as the ones proposed by House Bill four eighty-three, are not the best way to manage our fisheries. Differences in biology and life histories require that management measures be developed specifically for each species being measured or managed. While size limit trips, while size limits, trip limits, and gear restrictions have been proven to reduce the overall commercial impacts, commercial landing and dead discards, they have proven to do just the opposite for the recreational sector, resulting in reallocation of the resources. The reason why I said that this bill, as we thought was dead, or not really dead, but we thought was dormant, wasn't gonna go anywhere, all of a sudden, Representative Yarborough, who was the one that introduced this bill, has gotten, all of a sudden, a whole bunch of different House representatives to sign on to it. This bill did pass the Wildlife Committee, and after it passed that, it was tabled. Now, like I said, it's come back up. Tomorrow afternoon at four thirty, this bill will be presented to the House Rules Committee. I would like for this board, because like I said, it's been a short time, we, we got this information late Friday afternoon, I would like for this board to, to pass a resolution opposing House Bill four eighty-three. And you have my personal commitment that I will be at that hearing tomorrow in Raleigh to present it. Unfortunately, we do not have one written, written up as of yet. But with the, with the information that I've given you today, we could definitely devise one and have one written that I could, I could present. If not, I would at least like to have the consensus of the board to at least give our opinions during that Rules Committee meeting tomorrow afternoon. during that Rules Committee meeting tomorrow afternoon.
I'm trying to understand all of this data. Are you basically saying that in the very first bullet point, did, did you write all the bullet points, by the way?
Nope.
Who did all the bullet points?
The bullet points were done by a independent scientist who actually works also with the North Carolina Fisheries Association.
Okay. Spot 45, 98%. That basically says out, done. 98 is effectively 100%.
Pretty much, yes.
Same with southern flounder, virtually the same with bluefish, almost the same with croaker. It significantly reduced the recreational harvest. I presume those percentages apply to recreational harvest, but I thought later I saw recreational harvest would increase. That's where I'm confused. On the very top of the back, it will severely limit commercial and ability to harvest many species affected. Where did I see that? I thought I saw Steve.
The real reallocation of resources, that one?
I, yeah, I'm not trying to. Limits create waste and form dead.
It's the first line on the, on the back page, Rob. If you read, if you read the bottom bullet on the first page, it continues on to the second, back of the second page, it says, "This will severely limit commercial fishermen's ability to harvest many species," and that's the one where it's talking about changing the size of the mesh size of the nets, most likely.
Ah, it's the third bullet point on the back. With the size limits, trip gear, and so forth, reduce overall commercial impacts, they have proven to do just the opposite for the recreational sector. I read that to mean the opposite of reduce would be increase. So that's where I was confused with the first, and again, I'm not challenging it. I'm just trying to understand it.
The first bullet says recreational.
Says basically, we're wiping out the recreational harvest, and as I was reading the third bullet, I interpreted that to say we're increasing the recreational harvest by reallocating from the commercial harvest. So I'm not clear. And again, not trying to put you on the spot.
No, no.
It seemed inconsistent, Steve. So I couldn't quite follow it. I mean, I'm in favor of our commercial fishermen, have been since on the board, but I just.
I think, well, Rob, that last, Rob, look at the last sentence in the fourth bullet on the back, where it says, "As commercial landings are reduced, more fish are available to recreational anglers, resulting in increased effort."
As commercial landings are reduced, more fish are available to recreational anglers.
I think that's addressing what.
But how can that be consistent with the first bullet point where the scientist says you're basically wiping out the ability to harvest all of these varieties of fish?
I don't know. I think that's, I would have thought that that would have said, not recreational, I thought that would have said commercial.
Yeah, I think that's what.
I think that was a mistake.
That's, that's a pretty big one.
Would you, Jim, agree with that?
Yeah, I, I, I do have some issues with what's on here, but the, the main overall point that they're making with this, I agree with. And number one, in, in the third bullet point, someone who fished for flounders for 15 years with pound nets, it's totally accurate. We're catching all of the females, I guess it's the fourth bullet point, we're catching all the females now and allowing them to be killed, and we're letting all the males go. It should be the opposite. We should be killing, one male, one happy male can fertilize a lot of female eggs. So there needs to be either a slot limit or something, rather than just saying you can keep the big ones.
Yeah, you've exceeded my ability to follow all this, your expectations, and I defer to you on it.
And, and years ago, they, they came to us and they said, you know, you have to put in escape panels, because the escape panels will let the small fish out. Well, at that time, it was a 13-inch flounder, which is a small flounder, we all agreed to it. Then they went to a 14-inch flounder, then they went to a 15-inch flounder, it keeps getting bigger and bigger. Well, now, you're, you're letting all the males go and you're killing all the females. It makes absolutely no sense. And when they start talking about, and this, this, these are recreational fishermen, and I got, I, I own the largest recreational fishing marina in the state, so I'm not taking sides, but these are recreational fishermen that are writing this. And furthermore, if they really wanted to make an impact on reducing some of the juvenile fish kill, they were looking at reducing the cormorant population, which exceeds 1.5 million birds in the hatteras population that consume between one to two pounds of fish a day.
Sometimes as much as three.
Sometimes as much as three. A day. They don't consider that. Nowhere in any of this stuff that they talk about, that they're blaming commercial fishermen for overfishing, do they mention the sound freezing over and the effects of what that does to the fish population. That kills fish way more than commercial or recreational fishing. I'm for both, commercial and recreational fishing. I think it's a resource that needs to be divided equitably, not us against them. And.
Recreational.
Sorry, Jim.
Recreation, it just makes me sick that they're trying to do this. This will put our commercial fishermen out of business.
Exactly.
Period.
So let me ask you this, there's, is there a hearing tomorrow? Is it what that is, is a hearing?
It is, it is going before the Rules Committee tomorrow at 4:30.
And, and they have public comment?
They have public comment.
You know, I'm hesitant to say, yeah, let's do a resolution, when we really need to see that in front of us and, and vote on it.
Right.
But I, I would not be opposed to you going and, and voicing some opinion with respects to what this House Bill 483 is about to do. I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to that, but to do a resolution and try to prove something is going to be difficult to do.
Right. Yeah, I understand.
I, I would agree with consensus. Sorry to mean to jump in here, but let me get a temperature reading on this board. I mean, we see the Cape Hatteras Anglers Club, we know how important recreational fishing is to our shoulder seasons. I mean, they carry us, those are the last few paychecks that our working people get heading into the Christmas season. If this is the kind of information that's going out there, and the people who are coming down here to ride on our beaches, spend money in our tackle shops, you know, just go somewhere else. That's what this is saying, and I, I got a problem with that.
I think they're talking about closing the flounder season from this August for a year.
62% reduction for a year, for a year.
They're talking about reducing the pound net season, which is usually, which is normally a three and a half month season. That's when you fish. Pound nets take, it's, it's a year-round fishery, because you have to go out in the woods and cut your stakes, you have to mend your nets, I mean, it takes forever to do all that. They're talking about cutting it down to a three-week season, the last two weeks of September and the first week of October. That's insane. The copper that they put on the nets, the copper paint to keep from the marine growth off of, it costs $2,500 a barrel. You need a barrel and a half per net.
And most.
I mean, nobody's going to do it.
And most pound netters are fishing multiple nets, so I, I think.
I fished 11 nets when I fished.
I think her husband fished.
Not only that, you throw back every fish that's, that's a lot, you, you don't kill fish in a pound net, you throw them all back alive that you don't use. It, it's just, it's so frustrating, and it just keeps coming back and back and back.
Steve, is anybody else going, Randy Douglas said he was going up there. Is anybody from the fishing, from the North Carolina Fisheries, commercial people going to speak tomorrow?
I have heard of a couple people who want to try to make it. I know that some of the people from the North Carolina Fisheries Association will be there. I have heard that a couple people from the, uh, now I'll take that back, no, yeah, from the Fisheries Association will be there. Because it has been such short notice, a lot of the commercial guys and some, even some of the, I've even talked to some of the recreational guys that actually build like lures and stuff, they were going to go up there too, but they, they've got a conflict of when they can get up there too, so it, it affects both sides, commercial and recreational.
The other thing I was going to ask, it seemed to me like every bait and tackle store, they're going to eliminate jumping mullet, mullet?
That's D-bait.
Anybody goes fishing, we go buy them mullet and shrimp and squid.
You're not going to catch a channel fast on a bloodworm.
Eliminate the main thing that we use to catch fish.
Right.
So I would think that every TWs across.
Right.
North Carolina would be raising T-totol.
Right.
H-E-double-L.
Well, you can get them for it.
This is, I, I would, I would encourage Steve to represent us and just say that this is a consensus on this board, due to the short notice that presented an obstacle, obstacle, obstacle for us to be able to respond to this appropriately, but I'm fine with him speaking on our behalf.
And I would, I would, if there are other, from the fishing industry, I think you can compare some notes with talking points.
I wish I could go to the meeting, but I'll be on an aircraft crossing the ocean tomorrow.
On an aircraft?
Yes.
So I got another question. So this Yarborough guy that introduced this thing, so it seems to me like he's also targeting the same people that he's trying to represent, which is the recreational people. Am I not right in my assumption here?
Yes.
So.
He's also who, who sponsored HB-867 last year.
Correct.
They have less to lose, though, comparatively speaking, in the commercial fishing.
His middle initials are CCA.
Yeah. Yeah. All right, you, you cool with that?
Yeah, I'm good, I'm good with that. I'll, I'll definitely go up and, and give them what I can.
Yeah, thanks for doing that.
No problem. Couple other things, um, since we've talked about, you know, family members in trouble and, and friends that have passed away and other things, I had a very dear friend of mine, Tom Aberley. He was a very inspirational in, in aviation. He, he was a pilot. He was a race pilot. His main thing was at Reno Air Races, and he, he raced, and with a few of his friends started the Phantom Race Team, which was the most advanced biplane in the world. Every time that he lifted off to race, he would break yet another speed record, if it was in qualifying or if it was in the race itself. He would be sorely missed throughout the aviation community, and I sent well wishes to his family from the sands of Kitty Hawk, the place of the first biplane, and wishing the fastest biplane pilot a happy endurance. On another sad note personally, Gary, it has been a pleasure to work with you, not only on this board, but in the back of an ambulance several years ago. And even when I turn on the radio and listen to 104, sometimes I still think I can hear your voice. As a friend of always, good luck in your retirement, well deserved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner House. Vice Chairman O.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Some words were spoken earlier about Dr. Riddick. I serve with her on the DHHS Board. She was my, in Nash County, we call her my doctor, she was my ophthalmologist after I learned how to say that. And always.
Can you spell it?
Yeah. Just very pleasant, very thorough, and always very, very professional. Coincidentally, talking about how, how lives cross sometimes, her dad's wife and my mom were really good friends and worked together at Burlington Industries in, in Rocky Mount for a, a long time. So she will be missed, just as a person, as a, as an ophthalmologist, professional, and on our DHHS Board. Glad to say congratulations to all of our Dare County graduates, be they high school or university. Proud of you, glad you're, glad you graduated, and those of you that graduated from high school get on to further education and, and, and make us all proud. Gary, Buddy Rowe, gonna miss you so bad, I can't tell you. You have been an absolute delight from my day one, which was middle of October in 2013, right on through now. Always appreciated and respected your counsel. Your work ethic is something like I have never experienced in my 73 years. I mean, it's really quite something, and we're going to miss you bad. Cheryl's going to pick up the pieces, I feel so sorry for her, I don't know what to do because our expectations are so high that it's just not even fair, but she's going to do a great job. You have, you have spent a great deal of the, of the last several weeks working with her, putting together a, a training manual that will last forever, and I can't tell you just how much we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Commissioner Bateman?
Sir, um, Dr. Riddick, classy lady, is all I can say.
Absolutely.
Nice person. We had some customers come into the restaurant that took a day trip to Oka Koke, rode on the ferry over there, rode the tram, had lunch, came back, and stopped and had dinner at the creek, and they said it was a perfect day. And so I think they've really done something good down there. Having said that, the question came up, what happened to the ferry that they were building? Does anybody know?
The passenger ferry that they were built? It's being rebuilt.
It's being rebuilt.
Rewelded, let's say.
Had some weld issues.
Yes.
Rewelded.
We got a ferry, so we're, we're good, but I'm just, I was just asking the other thing. I went to Manny's high school graduation, and great time. I was going to try to get a hatteras, we got busy at the restaurant, fortunately for me, and so I couldn't get a hatteras, but Manny's was very well attended. They had a dual graduate there of the College Alamo and of high school at the same time.
Yep.
And that was just, that was amazing to see that kid come out, you know, seventeen, eighteen years old with an associate's degree and high school diploma.
Yep.
On the same day.
Wow.
Yeah, I was really good there.
At zero cost.
Yep, yep, at zero cost, that's right, in your vision. Gary, and I appreciate, I'll just tell you this, when I came on the board, Gary called me up and said, you know, I need you to come by and sit and talk to me. I went, oh God, what is this going to be all about? He was so very cordial and methodical about everything that needed to be done, and it made me feel at ease the first day, because it is somewhat overwhelming to take a jump like this, but he made me feel at ease, and I appreciate the, although it's been very, very short, my tenure here, I mean, working with you, you've done an outstanding job, and your work ethics, as Vice Chairman said, are unmatched anywhere, so I appreciate it. And my door is always open, call me. Come get some coconut shrimp.
And he will give you takeout when you get a call from Rob or Jim Tobin at 5:00 when you're sitting down to eat.
Yeah.
Gary, where are you?
And one more thing, has anybody heard about the sales tax? Is that, does that dim?
Let's hope it is, we don't even like to bring it up.
Okay, all right, I did. I'm done.
Yeah. Thank, thank you, Commissioner.
Silence is golden.
Gary, I've said my remarks to you personally, one-on-one in my office, and I'll just leave it at that. But your service is impeccable. With that being said, is there a motion to adjourn until the 15th of July at 5:00 P.M.?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner House is our second.
Seconded by Gary Gross.
Seconded. Seconded by Commissioner House.
How about endorsed by Gary Gross?
Any further, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, pose like sign.